Good morning and welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of April 26, 2013. This meeting is called order, I don't have a gavel, so I'll use my pen. Everyone, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Gentlemen, if you remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're not quite where we normally are here, so anyway, we're going to work at this the best we can. We didn't have the video that we normally would have, so if anybody, at any rate, we'll just move on. Mr. Bowers?
Mayor, members of the council, this morning is workshop session through third budget workshop fiscal year 2013 and 2014. I'm going to turn it over to Sheri Scherhammer, but first, the recommendation that we bring to you is the same as it was last time. No new increases, and we bring this back for discussion because of the interest in some components of the budget to be reviewed further, and we look forward to the direction from the city council. Sheri?
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Today, we have six slides to go through with you to follow up on the two issues that you asked for additional information on. One issue concerns additional resources for public safety. The council report outlines the additional resources the police and fire departments would like to have to enhance services provided to the community. The second issue concerns the medical insurance premiums proposed for next fiscal year for employees and retirees. Once your discussion about these issues concludes, we will need direction on how to proceed as we have to return to you in a few weeks with the tentative budget to adopt. Today's workshop will close with a reminder of the budget calendar for the next two months and all of the required steps that we must complete to have an adopted budget in place for the start of next fiscal year on July 1. This is the five-year forecast that we showed you at the April 16 workshop. So last, there have been no changes to this, so it's the same one that you saw on the 16th. Last week, we did discuss the changes that we had brought to you since March 27, and those changes essentially narrowed the ongoing structural deficit by $8 million. Originally, we were up over $11 million. We narrowed it by eight. Now, instead of offering up additional ongoing expenditure reductions at that time that would have resulted in layoffs, we had recommended a few changes to revenues that would help us over the long term. The net result was that the additional revenues would bring in $6.3 million more of general fund ongoing revenue for '14 and beyond. And at the April 16 workshop, you provided us direction to proceed with those revenue adjustments. Now, two additional points about this five-year forecast that I'd like to make because it'll, I'll refer back to them when I get to the next slide. Is total reductions required before this temporary sales tax sunset is $14.3 million? That's the sum of the two numbers that are in the yellow highlighted box, boxes, excuse me. The ending general fund reserve, our rainy day fund, grows over the five-year period from about $8 million at the end of FY '14, and that's an estimate, to an estimated $20.3 million by the end of '18. At $20 million, it is just above the 10% reserve level that is called for in the city's existing financial policies. And the other thing to note is FY '14 still has an imbalance, a structural imbalance, in that ongoing expenditures exceed ongoing revenues by about $3.4 million. And that's why you see the fund balance drawn down from 11, little over 11 million at the start of '14 to $8 million at the end of '14. So that's what we showed you last week. We are requested to bring back a couple of follow-up items, and this slide summarizes the additional resources requested by police and fire to improve or enhance existing services and put the city on a path toward improved compliance with national standards. This slide also shows the additional resources required to spread over two years the cost of rising health insurance premiums for retirees. The net additional ongoing cost that's shown at the bottom of the slide that would occur for the general fund totals $5.5 million. That's ongoing costs, and then the net additional one-time cost would be about $2.1 million. Now, these three items are discussed in detail on pages four to eight of your council report in today's agenda packet. What I'd like to note is for the health insurance item, when we get there, there are two tables on page seven of the council report that show the premium levels that were recommended by the actuarial study and those that were recommended to you last week. These tables also provide a comparison of the premiums that are being paid this year versus what's proposed for next year. Okay, now, the next slide will show you the five-year forecast again, but this time, we're going to include the additional $5.5 million in ongoing expenses and $2.1 million in one-time expenses. There are three key points about this five-year forecast and how it differs from the one that I showed you in the prior, just a few minutes ago. One, your expenditures increased by $7.5 million to cover the additional ongoing and one-time costs shown on the prior slide related to public safety and health insurance. What that shows, then, is that your imbalance between ongoing revenues and expenditures has worsened. So we have ongoing expenditures that are about $11 million more than our ongoing revenues, and that explains why you see that fund balance drop from $11.5 million at the beginning of '14 to only $500,000 by the end of the fiscal year. The other key change in this forecast is that the level of reductions that are shown in the two yellow highlighted boxes, the 10.9 and 9.0, those reductions have now increased from $14.3 million that we showed earlier to just under $20 million. And these reductions would be required in order to accommodate the sunset of the sales tax out in fiscal year '18. We would still have to do reductions for '15 because we would end up with a negative fund balance if reductions were not done.
Stop me for just a second. This is all assuming, and it's a guess, there's nothing for certain, this is all assuming that the random management fee is no more than $6 million.
Yes, that's correct.
And if that comes in at eight or nine, then this is all out of whack again?
Yes.
Okay.
Following up on that, when we received this previously, we were showing $500,000 for replacement costs included in here. It was showing $6.5 instead of six.
Yes, Mayor and Council, yes, we showed an additional $500,000 for replacement or renewal costs, but those are captured up in the expenditure numbers. So they're still in here, they're just on a different line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The bottom-line message here is that we have an unsustainable fiscal situation that's created by adding the additional expenses. And finally, what you can see is that the general fund reserve level is perilously low in '14 and '15. It gives us no wiggle room whatsoever. So it gives us a very thin margin for a city of our size and breadth of services. And as Mr. Bowers said at the beginning, the recommendation has not changed from April 16th. This creates a fiscal, this is not fiscally prudent, and it's not recommended that these additional expenses be added in. Now, we go on to the benefits part. At the April 16 workshop, one premium structure for each tier was presented to you. What that means, if you look on page seven of your council report, you'll see that, you'll see that a comparison of the premiums. And at the 16th workshop, the premiums that were recommended for '14 that you see on the second table that's in here, you'll notice that the retiree and the employee total premium is the same. So if you look at table two, under the retiree part for FY '14, you'll see, for example, the first row there, HMO single, it shows a total premium of about $498. And then if you go over to the right-hand side, the second column from the right, you'll see the same premium amount. So what we're recommending, what we recommended on the 16th is that the premiums are the same. That's not the case in the current fiscal year, they're different. For next fiscal year, what we're showing is that the retirees would continue to pay their full premium amount. That's the way it's done this year. They are paying the full premium amount that's shown in the 13 column. So for '14, they would continue to pay that full premium amount. Among the active employees, the way the premium is split, the total premium, is shown on this slide, where the employer picks up 85% of the cost for the employee only, and it's 75% of the cost if it's more than the employee. For next fiscal year, the medical insurance premiums, just the medical insurance premiums for the city, cost $13 million. So the additional benefits that we offer, dental, life, et cetera, are on top of the $13 million that's shown here. Of that amount, the general fund portion is about eight. Then we have the employee contributions just for medical insurance of about 3.9, and then the retirees contribute about 3.7. Moving to a single premium structure does require the most significant premium increases to the retirees. And you can see that in that table on page seven. You'll see the highlighted, it shows up on your page as kind of a gray color, and you'll see it's labeled retiree change, and you'll see that, what those increases amount to. Now, there are options to offset that cost increase to retirees, a two-year phase-in or a three-year phase-in. But what we explain in the council communication is there is no guarantee that the cost increase will be equally distributed over the two or the three years, and that's for a couple of reasons. One, we're going out to bid during fiscal year '14 for a new health insurance contract because we're at the end of ours. The insurance market that will, that will be bidding on this is going to reflect the impact of the federal healthcare legislation. We can only guess at what that impact is going to be. Estimates are that it's going up, the premiums may go up, other estimates are that they may go down. So we really have no idea what the premiums will be for retirees or employer or the city until we complete that bid. And that's why we're saying that the cost increase that we're showing in that retiree change column, we can only guarantee what that cost increase will be for one year because once we bid this out, the change could be significantly different. In addition, every year, we have an actuarial analysis done, and depending on what our claims activity is, that actuarial analysis may show that we have to raise our premiums or perhaps lower our premiums or keep them the same. Now, we, I believe Mr. Brown had mentioned at the April 16 meeting, we had a very high claims level last year, and we have a very high claims level this year. Now, that's bound to happen, you'll see claims go up and down, but two high years of claims will fit into that actuarial analysis and likely cause pressure for it to go up, or at least the recommendation. In addition, what these two tables show you on page seven is that what the actuarial recommended rates are, they're actually higher than what was recommended on April 16th. So you'll see that the retiree increases that are recommended in table one, the far-right-hand column, for example, the HMO single, what it shows is the actuary study is recommending that the premium go up by $233. What was recommended last week and what has continued to be recommended is that it go up by $101. So what was recommended is actually less than what the actuary is recommending to So the next few slides are the budget calendar, so I wasn't sure if you wanted me to go on and go through the budget calendar or if you wanted to return to any of the other The budget calendar is simply a reminder to you of the very tight timeframe that we're working under. Between now, which is actually April 26, and May 9, we've got to put together the budget book. Now, we're not going to be able to do all the writing that goes in there. What we will produce for you are the required schedules, and we will take that to print and then have that delivered to you by May 17. And then the actual adoption of the tentative budget occurs on the 28th. And then once we go from there, we've got required public hearings, and then you have to adopt the, you have to adopt the budget and then adopt the property tax. And it requires, the state statutes on budget adoption require three evening meetings that are two weeks apart, or at least on our schedule, it's three evening meetings two weeks apart. So that's the calendar that gets us to an adopted budget by July 1. That actually brings us to the end of the presentation.
Mayor?
Councilmember Alvarez.
I would like to hear from the fire chief and the police chief and do some explaining on the supplements, and we know, you know, this was coming, and it's a shame that all of a sudden we're being told that, you know, we're in bad shape. We're in bad shape a long time ago, but we still keep finding money for other things that are not as important as our fire and police, which is the public safety. So I think that we're going to have to hear from these people, and they can tell us what exactly they, they put a supplement because they have a need. And if they have a need, that is more, to me, means more than other, other programs that we have today. So if it's possible, if we could hear from them?
Certainly. Bertie?
Mayor, members of council, good morning. We seek the opportunity to be here and to answer any questions. If you want the specifics of Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, of what our supplemental requests are.
Yes.
Basically, what we're asking on the, on the request is twofold. One is, the first and foremost piece of this is that we have, again, as Ms. Scherhammer talked about, the overall budget is that we continue to maintain a structural problem within our budget despite making efforts, in fact, to create our budget for '14 that you see presented currently, it's in your, in your budget books you have. We did a lot of position eliminations and took that salary and applied it to some of the issues we had, such as our shop and fuel and overtime problems. There's about four or five of our FTEs that we basically took the salaries from those and moved them across to these other fund lines. So what that results is, we're asking for $553,000 roughly for overtime, $68,000 for paramedic pay that currently has been unfunded, and $208,000 and change for shop and fuel costs. When you see the request of the 1.7 million, that piece of it comprises about half of that, about $830,000 to $850,000. The balance of the request is for eight additional sworn members. Our intent on that is, that comes to, with the salaries and lease purchase on two trucks is $967,000 in ongoing money. What we've done is, we presented to council initially during the initial budget workshops that we have issues related to the volume of calls we have and the response time issue that we've discussed previously. We've come up with a solution, and that is to hire eight bodies, put four peak-time trucks in place, be able to utilize that over the next year. That would, that would basically help us with the volume issue we have today. We could put those in our, in those two stations identified that are single-company stations, allow us to get some relief from them during our peak times, four days a week, 10 hours a day, meets roughly what our measurements are of peak time, and hopefully do an analysis on that, come back possibly next year should, should there be an opportunity to continue to receive additional bodies, if that is the case, and then ultimately go to a 24-hour truck that we originally requested. I feel that our first requests were around $4 million in supplemental requests. We have continued to sharpen the pencil and pare this down to the best solution we can, and that is to come up and just at least apply the peak time units to try to offset this, this issue that we have with the high call volume and our, and our response, our response time problem.
Chief Burdick, God bless you, by the way. God bless you, by the way. God bless us all. Chief, the original need, I mean, the original number for the need that we needed was 45, I'm doing my research, 45. And then because of, you know, having to bear down and sharpen our pencils and because of, you know, with times ran, we got down to 50. And then now, because, you know, approaching, you know, the peak time solution, now we have actually, we've actually dipped into the marrow of the bone, which is, how many now?
Mayor, Councilmember Shaver, eight.
Eight. So with that being said, chief, I commend you because it's absolutely incredible because in, I know in 2008, you know, incidences were probably just shy of 32,000. And then 2012, there were 36,400 with a 14% increase. So with these tough times, what you're proposing is still delivering service, but at the same time, you know, we're doing it, you know, in hard times. So I commend you for that, and I commend you for not only keeping our citizens safe, but also the employees delivering that service. Thank you for running the Minot Oil and trying to make this happen.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Chief, in 2008, how many FTEs did you have?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, we had total full-time equivalents in 2008 was 263.5.
Okay, and how many do you have right now?
We currently have 267 authorized. We have some vacancies now, but we have 267.
And Councilmember Shaver said, I thought that calls had increased about 26, fire calls had increased about 26%.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, from 2008 to today, yes, we've seen a 26% increase in structural fires. And again, as I explained in a previous workshop, that is actual, when we get there, that we have an actual fire. We go on a lot of alarms, but many of them are either stealth extinguished, extinguished by somebody prior to our, those are incidents where we engage the fire.
To that point, 26% increase in structural fires, how many is the actual number? Not percentage, but actual number?
Right. Let me get that, I have that information. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I apologize, it's, let me make sure I get you the correct. There it is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In 2008, 198 structural fires, and 2012, 249 working structural fires. So roughly 51.
Okay, good.
No, go ahead.
Just a correction on the number. You said 263 in FY '18.
On FD counts?
Right. Your peak was the next year. And that number?
Councilmember Sherwood, that is 293.5 was the, was the highest authorized, I think.
I think that was the number that she was trying to get to.
And I'm sorry.
So it was all nine?
Oh, fiscal year '09, 210, 293.5. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing more at this moment.
Councilmember Alvarez?
So the eight sworn employees would not, you still, we're not meeting what you really need, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, I think what we're suggesting here is that the eight employees would give us an opportunity to deploy peak time units that would allow us to measure the impact of that.
Mayor, I, I have a comment.
You have the floor.
We have been, I know that we're, we are broke. We are, we don't have the money, but we do find money for other things. And this is very important, that we have our public safety, the way, you know, that's going to, to work out. We cannot be cutting from something that's going to save lives, which is fire and police. You just have to look at what's been happening in, around the nation, and I just don't agree to be, to have enough money to be helping bring in business when we can't provide the proper safety to our residents. So we, I mean, I've been looking at numbers of what we have given to business to come in, to create more jobs, to, you know, they're not, a business should be paying for their own. And for, it just doesn't make sense, and it doesn't make sense to community for you to take away so you can have or look good in providing businesses with money and not providing businesses. They've taken a lot. The communities have lost leisure services when, you know, really, they're not leisure services. Our kids are out in the streets. That causes a problem for police. The fire, you know, if we're spending more on insurance, more of the insurance because of our age or any particular illness, that creates more for the fire department. I think that we really need to think about the, where we spend our money. And I know that, that a lot of you will not agree with me, but you can't be supplying more money into bringing in, at this time, they should understand that we can't do it. We can't do, there's, to me, fire and police is the most important. Forget your, and I like the festivals, the glitters and all that, but at $700 and some thousand dollars expense for the glitters is not, you know, is, that is not right. We're bringing We're bringing in people for entertainment, but we don't make any money out of it. And I've got the papers because I've called the different departments, and we're providing services that are at the bottom of the list, that we should not be thinking about. We should be thinking of our public safety, because that's the immediate service for the taxpayer, which is our customer. I can't agree on spending, and we find it, you know. We find the money, but we can't find the money for the police and fire. I know that there's the enterprise fund that I'm not for spending, but in time of need, we spend it for other things. Spending fifty million of the enterprise fund, that was not a good business decision. Fifty million could have helped fire and police more than what we spend it on. Something that is not giving us any money at all. To this day, we're still losing money, but we cannot stand up and say we made a bad decision, and now we're going to continue making a bad decision by cutting police, fire, recreation. There's no program in recreation. You might as well erase it. Do we want to do that for the police and the fire? I can't vote for that. That's just my opinion, and I've done a lot of research. I've got the papers. Seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand for our, you know, one festival. No. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaver.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez, I just want to connect with your sentiment. I feel exactly the same way. But one thing I want to bring to everybody's intention here, in this room, we have some incredible, intelligent people in this room. That's why we're here. And I've known to this day, we've heard doom and gloom enough to probably fill a few universes, okay? But the thing is, where we're at today, we're hearing some very viable, very realistic solutions that I think that we need to heed. And I think it's time that we move in that direction of solutions, not what's mean, not problems, not hearing what's dark. I really think it's opportunity is on us right now to bring the light into the room. And I really feel that the solutions we have in front of us and the energy and the intelligence of this room can help us. And I know that we have some very viable and very realistic solutions. Mayor, that's just all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I guess it all comes back to four fifty-seven. I'm still a step, we wouldn't even have that tax if it weren't for fire and police. I mean, they are the ones that went out and walked the streets and knocked on doors and did this for the rest of the city, too. It wasn't just for them, but for the rest of the city. And if it weren't for them right now, trying to uphold the number-one mandated service of a city is public safety, we wouldn't have the tax. We'd be bankrupt right now. So I guess I'm just a little upset that all that effort went out, including my effort to be a spokesperson for fifty-seven, for against four fifty-seven, and that we're sitting here right now trying to whittle police and fire down again. Of course, police thirty-one sworn, that, you know, may have to come down a little bit, but eight sworn for fire, that's it. Eight sworn for fire for everything that they've done, and we wouldn't be sitting here right now. We would be in financial disaster if they had not gone out and pushed no on four fifty-seven to get that, keep that tax. So I just, we need to find a way. We need to find a way to support the number-one mandated service in a city, which is public safety. And if it, as Councilmember Alvarez says, there's other cuts to be made, then I guess that's where we're going to have to go. But I've got to make a stand now, as I have along, all along, about mandated services in this city. I mean, that's what a city, what is our job? What's government one oh one? What do we do as a city, as a municipality? What's our obligations to the citizens? It is public safety. It is sanitation. It is our water services, the things that actually make a city run. So I just think we need to find a better way, and the numbers always change. I have to be honest, I'm never quite sure if I trust the numbers, so we need to find a way. As far as the medical, you know, I was the one that said it was atrocious, and it is atrocious, but I'm thinking that if we have this year extension with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we can do, start negotiating right away and finding ways to help with the cost, and there's lots of things that can be done, you know, with medical, with higher deductibles and HSAs and FSAs and wellness and, you know, just restructuring rates for people that don't smoke, and there's a lot of things that I think can be done to bring that cost down. So I'm okay with, I'm not okay with the atrocious increase for the retirees and the employees, but I think we need to, we really need to go ahead and do what we have to do there, and really start working immediately on what we can do to help alleviate the cost on our medical for employees and retirees. But when it comes to public safety, that should be our number-one mandated concern. And so I am willing to listen to Chief Burdick on what he needs and Chief Black on what she needs, and will support them. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Well, I'll be for now, Mayor, until we hear from Chief Black.
Okay. You've had a couple times. I've got to share the...
I'll share, but I'll do my turn.
Thank you. Again, Vice Mayor, it's a little bit of my thunder. The numbers, the numbers do consistently change, which is a bit frustrating to follow. We got a memo a couple of days ago on FTEs being filled outside of public safety, and it comes to almost twenty-three. Some of them have already been filled, some are in recruitment, others are being studied. The positions having to do with the city manager auditor and city court, city attorneys, that's about five and a half. I tend to agree with these other ones. I'm wondering why we're even in recruitment for them. It's, you know, here we are, we're fighting over eight positions in fire and some number in police, and here outside of that, you know, we have these other positions that we're looking at. The other thing is, and I know we're not on police yet, but we're having this twenty people, twenty folks a month that we're losing, and yet those, the salary savings doesn't ever seem to be reflected in the numbers. And that's a bit of frustration, too. I mean, we're not filling, we're not losing twenty and then filling twenty every month, so there's got to be, you know, where are those positions at, and where does that salary savings come in? I know another thing that we have a problem with is, you know, we have to put in the full FTE for the year, even though we know we're not going to get those bodies probably till half end of the year, if not later, and yet we have a problem factoring that in. So again, the numbers just consistently are confusing to me, and I think I have a pretty good handle on it. In terms of the, I agree with the retiree, I think, you know, with the negotiations coming up soon with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we can work with them a little bit harder to get what we need. It's a shame that we waited this long to reflect those increases that were stated before. But again, I agree with Vice Mayor that there's, we need to do something to kind of lessen that. I'm almost in agreement with the eight forty-four one time, even though the general fund can't take it. Another thing, and I've talked to Mr. Bauer on this as well, is the three million that we have going into sanitation, why can't that be won this year? I mean, I understand that we have, it's a consideration for bonding. I don't know that we're going out for any bonding near term. I don't know, the fact that we stated we were going to pay those funds back, we are going to pay them back, but do we need to start at three million this coming year? I see that as an opportunity of two or three million, you know, and maybe we should put at least a million in there to show, to show that we're trying, so there's a couple million there. So it just, again, it just gets down to where, and I've seen this over the past year, being on the other side, where the numbers just tend to, they change every time they're presented. And so it ends up being confusing, and somehow in the future, we've got to come up with a better way of presenting these where it's, it's just easier for folks to navigate through. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, I could, I'd like to address the one thing, comment you made. It's important in your workshop report, when you talked about this, you did talk about the half-year salary that we mentioned. One of the things we were able to do, working with Mr. Bolton, is in your report, it says one-time general fund cost of two hundred and forty-three thousand, offset by the four hundred and twelve savings.
I saw that.
So basically what we've done is we've even tried to take, to remove that one-time cost by, because they do have to load the full amount in. Depending, again, on the hiring timeline, we would be able to use that money to offset some of these other one-time requests that we have, such as our self-contained breathing apparatus that we did, has been balanced by that saving. So what you're seeing in the ongoing is actually we're able to utilize some of that revenue that comes in to offset the one-time cost. Thank you, and I realize that's what that number represents.
Chief, I've got a question for you. Last year's budget, you were given a certain amount of money to run your department on, and you'd actually run over that, and I don't, I don't know the exact amount that was. My question is, this year, if you had those eight additional firemen, would that keep you from running over next year? Because you're going to have more money that would have to account for, would that solve the problem of the overtime that you had last year?
Mayor, I appreciate the question, and I'll give you a somewhat difficult answer to that, because it's always hard to quantify that based on, in emergency service for both police and fire, we can never predict what events are going to occur, and that's one of the problems that we have managing our overtime budget. When major events occur, large-scale incidents, things like that, we can have a flu epidemic that for us, because these guys back here on the front line, they get sick, they're out, we've got to call in overtime. So directly to answer is that with the proposal we have of the two peak time trucks, we would obviously have to look at that closely, and we want to maximize those to impact services to citizens. That's the goal. Does that mean that we have to constantly staff those back should people call in sick? We would certainly look at that and watch that. And what I'm saying is, if we were looking at an overtime deficit next year, we would have the ability through these two trucks is to shut one of them down and redeploy those individuals to try to help offset overtime costs. So it gives us some degree of containing our, within our budget versus overspending as we did this year.
And what was the major reason for your overspending this year?
The two issues, Mayor, and one was overtime and the other is shop and fuel costs.
Okay. Going back to the overtime again, what was the reason of the overtime? What was the shortage? Was it just manpower? Was there a major catastrophe that happened that I'm not aware of? You know, what was the issue?
Mayor, to your point, year over year, we have watched, and we're fairly consistent, again, outside of the large-scale incidents that may impact it, but we're fairly consistent in that we need around, anywhere from one point two to one point three million dollars a year to constantly staff the trucks to maintain the level of service, to maintain the base number of units in service in the, in the, in the city. Due to the recession, when we were forced to make cuts, the only place, again, that I could cut is in overtime, as well as shop and fuel. Those are the discretionary areas that I had control of. First two years, just as police has a public safety sales tax reserve, we had a public safety sales tax reserve that we basically spent through, much like the general fund reserve has been spent through as we've gone through this recession. We didn't have to decrease levels of service. Where we are today, without amending the overtime issue, without correcting the overtime issue, that public safety sales tax reserve for us is gone. So the only thing I can do now is begin to shut trucks down. And that is basically where we're at, is on the baseline request that I talked about to get the overtime, the five hundred and fifty-three thousand, the shop and fuel of two hundred and eight thousand, is to maintain the service that we have currently. And that is how we've managed that up until this fiscal year. This fiscal year, we had no reserve, so we overspent by one point two million. I think Mr. Hammer tipped forward the other evening to counsel some of the balancing moves for this year, and that included our one point two million to make us come out whole this year. So we will have an ongoing problem with the overtime if we don't address it. The issue of the eight bodies is to try to address the peak time issues of the call volumes that we have now, the stations I described before.
Okay, so we're still, we're not going to take care of the overtime issue, that's separate, that's have to be additional money, but we're still going to add eight more people to handle the call volume. The one isn't necessarily going to help the other.
Mayor, this total request, the one point seven million, this is the problem, it asks for the eight bodies, but that's not all tied. Nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand is tied to the bodies and the equipment that need. Eight hundred and thirty thousand is to fix the overtime and the shop and fuel issue. So if you look at it, eight hundred and thirty thousand is what we need to fix our structural problem. Nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is what we are trying to address the call volume issue with.
Okay, and the shop issue, is there anything we can do there to cut that cost?
Mayor, we're actively looking that. In fact, one of the ideas here, again, as we've discussed, a lease purchase on a vehicle, I've asked our folks over resource to look at more efficient trucks so we get better mileage. We're trying to get some information on that from the manufacturers right now.
Okay, but on the trucks that you have now?
Mayor, I'm sorry, no, we have, we're stuck with what we have. We have no capacity to, such is what was done with the police vehicles, to bring in propane and that. We don't have the capacity to afford to convert them to something else, to another fuel source. That's what you're saying.
But this actual shop cost, you have one place that you typically take your vehicles to, and there's nothing you can do there to cut that cost? There's nothing they can do, or that's taboo to even talk about it?
No, no, Mayor, we have scrutinized that. There's two issues. We have the heavy mechanic stuff, the things that the mechanics work on, on the big trucks. Those costs are within, when we look at from private sector to public sector, they're within the norm, if you will, so it is what it is, basically. If we took it to, in fact, sometimes our shop can't fix some things. They go to someplace like, say, Williams Diesel. Those costs are very similar, and to fix one of those trucks, that, I would just say those, we've done all we can to bring those costs down. Conversely, on our small fleet pickups and cars, I've worked with Mr. Kent over the years because we have had issues with the cost of that. They have brought those in line that now are competitive with, say, if we went to Qlube or something like that, we're in line with those. So I guess the short answer would be, I think all efforts have been done, working with our shop, to bring those costs down to the minimum of what they can possibly be brought down to. The other impact is the fuel piece, and that obviously is subject to, you know, industry rates, and I believe that was one of the supplementals that went forward on the earlier workshop, was a citywide increase for fuel costs because of that price.
I did have an opportunity a while back to talk with several firefighters, and one of the frustrations a lot of them had is with things being so tight and channels that they have to go through, a lot of the firemen are very, very capable of doing a lot of things, and their frustration is, you know, we could do this ourselves, it's something we actually might even enjoy doing, and yet our hands are tied, and we're told we can't do that, that we have to go through the normal channels and let other services do that. So, you know, that's something that I would like to entertain, if there's a way we could do it. I don't know how much it would help you in your budget, but anything we can do, if people are willing to do it and capable of it, I don't know why we wouldn't want to.
Mayor, to your point, we just met with Mr. Kent and his facility staff. Captain Hester and I met last week and had that very discussion, and we are working towards some alternatives on that. Some things, obviously, it's critical that we get them inspected, just as we would ask any citizen to do, and we follow those procedures, but they are also willing to look at some of the other activities that aren't quite as complex, if you will, and let our folks fix what they can fix. So we're moving towards that solution.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to agree with Councilmember Sherwood, the Vice Mayor just stole our thunder by bringing to the table, the numbers do change, and they do, they're not consistent, but so did Councilmember Sherwood, he stole some more thunder when he brought up the FTEs that we have. So it's obvious that we have some solutions here, but it's obvious that the citizens have been giving us the momentum we need to provide the services that we're supposed to provide, you know, way back since Prop 401. I don't know if you're familiar with that, Prop 401? And then just recently, the no on four fifty-seven. So obviously, it is... So obviously, it is, without a shadow of a doubt, that our citizens are requesting these services, and it's up to us to provide them. But also, Mayor, just on your comment of, you know, you talked about the firefighters, you know, stepping up. And I don't know if I misunderstood you, but, but, you know, you know, getting our firefighters, say, work on trucks or things like that, they got a lot on their plate. And, you know, and, and to be honest with you, we have our police officers on firefighters that are skilled beyond belief. But we need to keep them polished what they're supposed to do. So just on that comment, I just wanted to comment there. But, but at the end of the day, I really like the dialogue that we're having, because it is productive, and it's about time that we come up with solutions. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, Mayor. And even though you passed it over to Councilmember Sherwood, but thank you.
Well, and I wanna clarify that the firefighters actually told me that there's a lot of things that they could do that they're not even allowed to, that they would actually enjoy doing. I'm not, I'm not entertaining that we turn them all into carpenters and...
I just wanted to clear for that.
Someone probably would like that.
I just wanted to clear for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, you know, in defense of our staff, I think, you know, we're kind of picking on the staff that the numbers keep changing. But I think every time that they change, they come in with an explanation as to why they changed. So I couldn't get that, it's not like they're coming up with numbers out of thin air. They're coming with numbers that are based on the research they've done, the information that we see from different sources, that they give us the best information that they, that they can provide. And yes, we can tear it apart after they presented to us and change those numbers. But I think the influence, perhaps, they're playing with the numbers, and I think they're sending a wrong message for our staff. The other, with regards to the 15, we started with 15 positions, as I said, because the last time chief, it's now down to eight. How much are we talking about in dollars for those eight positions?
Mayor, Councilmember Martinez.
It's the 1.7 million.
The 1.?
No.
Oh, it includes overtime?
That's the total request. I'm sorry, it's not, about 967,000.
957.
967.
And is anyone identified at this point where, say, if we were to do that, where did we come from?
Mayor, and if I could, Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, just, just to be clear, the 967 includes the lease purchase of two, two apparatus. If you wanna ask the pure cost of the, of the employees we have, it's about 828,000 for the...
100,000, yeah, basically. Or fireperson. We wanna get in trouble here.
At this point, we don't know whether we're correct.
Mayor and council, that's correct. Right now, ongoing expenditures already exceed ongoing revenues by about three, almost three and a half million dollars.
And that's the other thing, I was gonna defer my comments, but I'll say some of it now, is that, you know, the information that we received at the last budget meeting, and the information we received for the today's budget meeting, it's, it's the same. You know, we're treading over the same ground that we go on and work before. You know, the same points are being made. But it comes down to, there's not enough money to do everything we want. All of us have said, and I still say, that public safety continues to be a top priority. However, all the departments have been decimated, not just by our police. The public safety, remember, public safety makes up 64%, or pretty near to that, from a general fund. And for the, our total budget, police and fire make up about 34%.
About 63%.
63, okay. And, and I asked us that the last time, the workshop, where are we with respect to other cities in those percentages? And we were told that it's pretty close. You know, we're not any higher, we're not any lower. You know, we're right there. And yes, 457, you know, saved us all, I think, a lot of grief, but not that it's, not that it's over with. But again, it's, you know, yes, our recreation programs have suffered, libraries, you know, the hours have slipped back. You cannot point at one department that has not, has not taken a hit. I mean, everybody has taken a hit. The question just comes down to, and getting our information that we have received more than once, is that we have a structural operating deficit that's not going away next year, not the year after next, nor the year after next. We're probably looking at four, five years, it's gonna be with us. And wherever we cut or beef up, something else is gonna suffer. And, you know, we're at the point where, you know, staff has recommended, we heard it today at the beginning, that staff has recommended that there be no change to what was originally recommended. And that, you know, I'm sure all of us have studied this. I mean, I went over it, then went over it, and I, I won't speak for myself, I agree with the recommendation. We can go back and look at decisions that were made, point fingers, you know, bad decisions were made, whatever you wanna say, money's being misspent. Let's look at now. We're faced with a problem now, a big problem. And whatever happened in the past is, is done. What do we have to work with now, and how can we make it better? And like I said in the past, there's a lot of pain out there, and it has to be spread and, you know, throughout, and it has been spread. And, you know what, we have enough firefighters here, may not be popular, we have to, or police, but I'm not in a popularity contest. I mean, I'm, I'm doing what I feel, and saying what I feel truly needs to be said for the interest of all of our citizens, and not just for the short term, but for the long term. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could, Councilmember Martinez, based on your comments, I do feel at that, this point, it's, it's important that I point out. Mayor, you mentioned that we overspent this year. That is providing the base level of service we have. The, I just wanna make sure it is explicitly stated, and I work for the city manager, he's given me permission to present the facts and the data to you, based on your comments. And I, and I fully understand, and believe, and I've been in all the meetings, that we have no money and have to continue to have deficit. What I am presenting here as the Fire Chief for the City of Glendale, is that if this isn't addressed, particularly my structural deficit, next year, I need, basically, policy direction, is what I'm asking. Response times, all those issues are policy-level decisions. Without addressing the structural deficit alone, then if you're asking me to come into budget next year, I have to shut trucks down. And I think that needs to be discussed and needs to be out in the open. I discussed that with the city manager. If I don't go overspend the budget next year, as you had to make an adjustment this year, then I will close fire stations. If we get the funding to fix the structural deficit, I can maintain services as it is. The eight individuals I'm asking for is, again, that is, to address the increased volume of calls. If council elects not to address the increased volume of calls, that is certainly council's decision. But I wanna make it clear, as the Fire Chief, that the structural deficit I had will put me in a place to overspend next year, and I either overspend, or I close stations. And as Mr. Sherham has pointed out before, department heads truly are not allowed to overspend. And this year, because of the election, because of the change in council, council took action to stop the corrective decisions we, we had in place. And that put us in a position that I didn't make, do the layoffs, that I needed to address the, the structural deficit. There was no time left. By the time everything worked through, I had no way to control it, other than to shut down several stations. That being said, obviously, again, Mayor, Councilmember Martinez, I appreciate absolutely what you said, but I wanna make sure you understand that if we don't address this, then two options, either council is okay with us overspending our budget, or we, we reduce the current level of service we have even, even more.
Mayor.
Councilmember Alvarez and then Mr. Sherwood.
I, I agree, you know, that we don't have, that we have been having a bad time with finance, finances. But we gotta still look at the past, because the past is what brought us here. And one of the things that we do need to stop is the agreements that we made in, that cost, that's costing us millions now, that we have to pay up. The deals that we did, those should have been thought of then. I'm not criticizing employees that they're giving us wrong numbers, or they're inventing numbers. It's not the staff. The decisions were done by the council. And those decisions were wrong. And, but we continue to do this. So that's where I do blame the council. And, and we need to change that. And I'm not gonna forget the past. Because this is what, we're, look at what we're going through now, because of the decisions of the council. And that is the feeling out there in the community. I wasn't part of that. 2003, I wasn't part, you weren't part of that. There's, there's people here that are going to make decisions now because of the bad decisions in the past. And what we need to go forward is to take care of our residents that got us elected and take care of the business for the city, and not continue with recession. It was poor decisions that were made in the past. And I'm not gonna change my mind on that. And I'm gonna keep saying that. And I know people get hurt by that. But to continue with agreements of millions and millions of dollars for businesses, what's important right now is the current services that we have to provide through the people that elected us. And that's all there is to it. I, I don't know, I'm not the person here, I won't be here too long, but, you know, while I'm here, you're gonna hear it. You made a bad decision, and we need to stop that. If you stop the decisions of putting businesses first, and it's not downtown, it's others, then I'm gonna keep saying that. That's all, that's all we can do. We, but we need to take care of services for the people that are already paying for that. We can't reward somebody just for coming in and putting a business where they're gonna make money. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Councilmember Sherwood.
Thank you. First off, no, I didn't, Councilmember Martinez, I didn't wanna infer that the numbers have been played with. I'm just saying it's frustrating that they change. I know we get, we get, we get further information. I'm just saying it's hard sometimes with a moving target to make sense out of it. That's all I meant by that. And another clarification is, yes, I know all departments within the city have taken a hit. We're doing a lot more with a lot less, and that's recognized. But today, we're here to talk primarily public safety and retirement medical. The... We have to get to a point where we're gonna work out a solution to this, and it's gonna be some number from what we're looking at there to what was possibly presented in the last workshop. We do, and again, to no, no deference to any people in the past, but we do have to question, as a council, what staff is providing us. That wasn't always done in the past. Councilman Alvarez is constantly reminding us of that. So we do have to challenge what we're hearing, make sure we understand it. We're here to, we're here to come up with some, some resolution. There's been, again, I had brought up the fact that, you know, that maybe there's a couple million out there in terms of delaying the repayment to the sanitation fund this year. Our revenue projections are based on a very conservative, and I agree, they need to be of a 3% to 4% a year. Again, as I've said, if the feds don't screw things up, I think we can be looking at better numbers than that. But we're here right now to resolve the fiscal, the budget for this coming fiscal year, and the other ones are just based on what knowledge we have today. So I'm good with the revenue numbers that are down there. I gotta believe, though, those are gonna improve. So we really need to, and we'll hear from Chief Black in terms of what she's after. I, I, you know, the fire numbers, their, their numbers have climbed. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we can play with the numbers all we want in terms of statistics, and she'll paint any picture that we want. We're all capable of doing that. And I've seen a lot of that in the past few weeks. But they're, I mean, they are, they are running ahead of what they have been in the past in terms of response time. Their calls have gone up, their fires have gone up 26%. I think we need to be looking at, you know, what, what they've provided us today. And again, that number started off much larger, something like 4 million, and we're down to 1.7. So I think they've done a good job of, of being practical and, and resourceful and coming to that number. So we need to hear from Chief Black on their number, and then decide on what number we're gonna have. This, we're not gonna resolve this today. We're gonna give staff some information to go back and whittle this down. Will we, will we end up within any balance of 8 million? Possibly not. But I think we, we gotta deal with the public safety part. I agree with, again, Vice Mayor, that, that in terms of the public perception, a lot of this was, what was to take care of public safety, even though it wasn't stated that way. A lot of it was, that does represent a good part of our general fund. And we just need to work together to get this, to get a satisfactory number. I don't, you know, I'm not, we don't need to dwell on the past, but again, we need to question what's being presented in front of us, and that's what we're doing. So, that being said, I think, I don't have any further questions for the chief, for Chief Burdick. I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from Chief Black, if there's no other questions. Pass it back to the chair.
Mr. Bowers, did you?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, you did, Mr.?
Yeah, I would, a little bit later, if I might.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Chief Black?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So you'd like an overview of the supplemental I presented, or?
Do you wanna start that, or did you just have a question, Mr. Sherwood?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay, yeah, that'd be fine.
Mayor, members of council, the supplemental that has been submitted on behalf of the Police Department includes 31 sworn FTEs. That would be 28 officers and three supervisors. Additionally, six non-sworn support personnel, which is, if you look over our FTE and the reduction that we have sustained over the years, that's where most of our reduction has been sustained. I need those support personnel for the work, the additional work that would be generated by those 31 FTEs. So the, the recommendation is for 3.8 ongoing and 1.4 million one-time. The, the other thing I would point out is that in the budget recommendation you've heard previously, that already assumed a reduction of 10 non-sworn FTEs. So what we heard from Chief Burdick is that his budget was made whole without that reduction of FTEs. So I would be going downtown in the, in the non-sworn side, going with 405 sworn positions going forward. And this number of 31 should sound familiar to you. It was the number that would get us to patrol strength that would allow that 20-20-20 ratio of responding to calls for service, administrative time, and available time. The reason I was able to bring forward 405 is because we did a pretty significant reorganization within the Police Department. People that had been doing proactive patrol work, we consolidated some of those squads. Some people, very dedicated officers, that were doing work in the area of training or undercover, were reassigned back to patrol so that we can make sure that we get the number of patrol officers out there that are necessary for everybody to be safe and for us to provide the level of service. So when I brought that 405, it was how we can get, get through with the existing budget looking, and, and the most important thing to me is that we are able to sustain this. So if there are additional positions added, it would be important that ongoing, we're going to be able to sustain that. Because what this organization has been through, not just the Police Department, but the entire city, has been very, very... city, has been very, very, it, it's been on, on the backs of police officers. And, and they don't have the confidence, which is why we see the attrition going as high as it is. People need to know that we're going to be able to continue to fund those positions that, and, and one last point I'd like to make, is we're positioned to be in exactly the same spot that the fire department was a few years ago, when they intentionally went to fund balance and public safety sales tax to keep things going forward, to continue to provide the level of service. So it's just a matter of time before our fund balance is depleted, and we won't be able to sustain what we, what we need for this community. And I'm happy to take questions.
I want for some of the council to... Any questions from the council? Mr. Sherwood?
I'm still struggling to get some information. Can you explain the, the unfilled position part of it, that, that keeps coming up? And how that relates to the thirty-one number?
Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, the number of thirty-one that I'm presenting here today is very closely aligned with the number of thirty-three that my predecessor had, had presented to council in years past and, and requested that this was what was needed to provide the level of service that this community needs. Those positions were provided but never funded. So this is a very consistent recommendation over a number of years, that the number we really should be at is not four oh five. It's, it's much closer to four forty. The highest number we've ever had filled positions in the police department on the sworn side is four twenty-three. We've been authorized as many as four fifty-one.
And how close to the, to the four oh five have you ever been in the last couple of years?
Last couple of years, I, that, the high number, and I'd have to look at my notes, I think we were at four twelve probably in, in two thousand and ten.
Okay. And how about this year? What's the closest? What's been your top number in sworn?
Our top number was...
Three eighty or something?
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, we were three ninety-eight, four hundred, right in there.
So we got pretty close to the four oh five?
We got pretty close.
And today?
That was early, that was early in this fiscal year. I had done some hiring before the very end of last fiscal year. And then we, we hadn't hired, we haven't hired anyone in over a year. Sworn police officer.
And then from that four oh five number, today, you're down?
Um, we're at three eighty-seven.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez?
On, um, I have some statistics here on our crime, and we had an increase. We're like, maybe third or second compared to if we look at Phoenix, which is more than a million population, and we have the property crime and the vandalism and all that has gone up. So I know our officers are, are very busy. So their response time, you know, has to be, they're not within, to, they're not answering a call within twenty minutes or fifteen minutes or anything like that.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, I think it was probably two meetings ago that I addressed the question about response time. Our response time to the highest priority calls is within our recommendation on that priority one, we...
Yes, I, I remember that.
So it's the report calls, the lower priority calls that do take longer for us to get to.
Okay, now, we had a meeting and it was discussed by a community over at Smith School, and they brought up that the response time on, they reported it as somebody being in their backyard or whatever. They have no, no idea what the, what is actually gonna happen. So they've waited for a policeman for an hour and, because they were another call. So when they make the call, it doesn't mean that, they can't even tell you what the priority is. Because they don't know, they just have somebody out there, and maybe that somebody has a gun or, you know, so we need the additional policemen to be able to respond in a quicker timeframe. Now, is, um, because they, we were talking right now about thirty-one. Would that take care of the problem of the response time? I know that you're going now into neighborhoods or you're changing your ways of, of sending police out. So if you're in the gateway, gateway area, going to Forty Thirty Avenue right away, that's taking time.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, what you're referring to is our, our deployment to beats, which will be implemented within just over a month. So we do expect that that will help us manage response times a little bit better. Obviously, the more officers we have out there deployed in the right areas and, and dedicated to the calls and the right priority, we should see a reduction in response times. I'm not saying that thirty-one is going to get that response time down to all of those targets all of the time, because it's, it's clearly a twenty-four, seven operation. So there will be times when we have a major event and that, you know, some of those lower priority calls might take longer for us to get to because we've got a number of officers deployed to whatever that incident is. So it's an average that we work towards. But clearly, if we have more officers out there, we would have a better, better response to those crimes. We can manage our resources better.
So those officers are very much needed then, because the community is, is complaining on the time that they have to, you know, wait. And that's because the policeman isn't out drinking coffee, they're answering a call because of the crime in the area. And it has gone up. So I'm very concerned over, over that. With our population that we have to be second to Phoenix, you know, in some areas, and then third, I just can't understand that.
Councilmember Chavera?
Chief Black, um, do you have a number, what was your, your, your total amount of calls last year?
About dispatch calls was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Okay. And, and out of those, how many were violent crimes?
Councilmember Chavera, the, the priority won't, won't relate directly to whether it's a violent crime or a property crime. So the priority one calls might be a property crime in progress. So I can tell you that last year, we had fourteen hundred incidents of violent crime. Does that answer your question?
Well, no, it was just in reference to Councilmember Alvarez's question, the increase, you know, of, of violent crime. I just wanted, you know, she said we're second behind Phoenix, but I just wanted, because those numbers are taken into pro capita. So I just wanted just, you know, an actual number. But the other, I guess, the question I have is, last workshop, you, you basically came in with a different ask, and now it's an increased ask. And, and of course, fire has decreased their ask. So it's just, I guess, what I'm trying to echo on, is echoing on Councilmember Sherwood, is, you know, just trying to find solutions and trying to find some type of parity that we can move forward and provide, in the words of Councilmember Alvarez, the services that our citizens didn't, don't, they need. So in relation to public safety, I just think that we all need to gather, and I know we can find a solution. But the thing is, is we have to just be really careful when, when we state these statistics, you know, when we're talking about call degradation, that it is something that's ongoing, and we have to address it now. So that's why I was just asking for specific numbers, Chief.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Black, I, the only question I have, because as with fire, I totally support you, your, your public safety. I want our police department to be as strong and good as it can be, so. But I have a question about, I guess, when I first saw this, is the disparity in the ratio for fire and PD. I mean, fire, it's always, we always think that one-third, two-thirds. But that's way off. So is there a reason that that's so far? I mean, he's, you know, chief's getting eight, and then you're getting four, or thirty-seven, that ratio, that one-third, two-thirds, and you may not be, I'm, maybe Sheri should address that.
Well, I actually think the chief could answer that question.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the, the number is the number. The number that Chief Burdick is recommending is what represents his needs. This is the number that represents the police department needs. And again, I'll remind you that my predecessor, Chief Conrad, had presented very similar information several years ago, and we carried those unfunded positions all these years. This is just a, you know, a diff, the, the same need presented with numbers attached to it that, you know, will...
And I, and yours actually, your need is higher than this, that this is just what you have submitted. But that's what I'm saying, because Chief, Chief Burdick, when he presented, it was fifteen, now he's down to eight. So I, I guess I was just, I'm just kinda confused on the, you know, disparity on that, on the two-thirds, one-third. But if that's the way it is, that's the way it is, because I support both of you. So, I mean, I both want you to have, you know, the FTEs that you both need. So I have a question about vacancies in general. Because of all the attrition, you know, that we have had in the city in the last year, how do we end up with just twenty-one point seven-five vacancies?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, the twenty-two point seven-five represented just those positions in the general fund, and it specifically excluded all police and fire positions.
So we have that much attrition in public safety and not in the general?
No, no. What I, what I'm saying is that the budget that we built next year includes just under twenty-three positions that are in the general fund. But it, remember, what I explained in that memo is that it excludes public safety. So I don't know the number off the top of my head of how many vacancies there are in public safety at the moment. We had a lot of other vacancies, the city overall had about a hundred and twenty vacancies as of mid-April. But once you exclude all the other funds, and once you exclude public safety, you're down to just under twenty-three positions.
I'm just surprised, just surprised at all.
Yeah, it was surprising, but, you know, it is what it is. And I did wanna address the salary savings issue. The budget amendments that I brought forward Tuesday night, that's where the salary savings are being used. We're covering those expense, those additional couple million dollars of expenses in the general fund by salary savings. We talked to you on the sixteenth that, that essentially, the budget amendments that were going to be coming forward, which included the fix to the fire department's budget for the current fiscal year, that it was going to be covered, covered out of fund balance. Salary savings roll into fund balance at the end of the year. So that's where they're at. There's nothing mysterious about the, the salary savings, that's, they're being used, period.
Any other questions, Chief Black?
I, um...
Is this a question for Chief Black?
Yes. On your, you say thirty-one positions that, and the six support staff. Tell me about the support staff.
Mayor, Councilmember Alvarez, the support staff is needed because of the additional work that will be generated by those thirty-one individuals. We have reduced support staff dramatically over the years. That's where we have made our reduction. Some of it was less essential, but these six positions in particular would be for communication specialists, detention officer, forensics, identification technician, and those are directly supporting the activities of officers. If, if I might just make one other comment. Traditionally, the fire department has used overtime differently than the police department. The police department budgets are overtime and uses are overtime based on things that happen outside of a normal workday. We haven't used overtime to regularly staff things. We are currently doing that, partly because of our vacancies and partly because of additional demand. And that's where we can use public safety fund balance to, to maintain the level of service. But it's, in my opinion, with thirty-three years of, of experience in this area, that's not a good ongoing solution, because expecting people or asking officers and civilian staff to work more than their forty hours on an ongoing basis is not in their best interest, is not in the best interest for, for the police department and service to the community. So I, I think that, you know, when I, when you look at four oh five that I brought forward, that was assuming that we would be filling those gaps using overtime, asking our officers to work additional shifts and, and cover the gap. So I, I don't know if that helps. Councilmember Chavera, the number is four oh five, we can make that number work, but it will be with that expectation that we can use overtime to, to manage some of that, that gap.
Mayor?
Yes?
Fire and police are two different departments. I know that Chief Burdick needs more than eight. But, you know, with the pressure of not having any money, I know that he's trying to do the best he can with the eight. I want, I wanna hear from you, just like you said, with the thirty-one. What is, what is it gonna take? Is it really with the fire gonna be eight or more? I want a response, immediate response, because that's public safety. We are in a, in a position that we have three, um, things in this valley or, you know, that, that would affect in a time of crisis if, or terrorist. We have the power plant, we have Lukefield, and Lukefield is, you know, we welcome Lukefield, but that's something that the terrorists look at. And we have the Super Bowl coming. We've got to be prepared. If you need more than eight, because we're gonna be spending money, even though we've lost in the past, we still have the Super Bowl. We've gotta have public safety there. And ongoing, because we have emergencies all the time. So I know, and I know the crime is up in Glendale. The papers wouldn't be publicizing that, and you wouldn't be telling us that it, you know, giving us information, because you know that the crime has gone up. If the crime goes up, the firemen have to respond to, to the crime, to a shooting. Take that officer, take that victim to the hospital. We need to invest in public safety, just like we found money for other extra things. And Councilmember Sherwood, I'm going to continue. I know I do it all the time, but we cannot continue doing the same as the other council did before. We have got to start new and show our taxpayers, and please don't blame staff. We have got to start new and show our taxpayers, and please don't blame staff. They're only doing what the council told them to do. And I support this. I don't, you know, if you took fifteen million from the, uh, what is it, the enterprise fund for the arena, this is more important than the arena. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Chavera.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Black, you know, it's obvious, the discussions we're having here today, that, you know, we're trying to make some ground and, and take care of public safety. Like I said, the only issue that I had and concerned is that your ask is different from the last time, and it's increased quite a bit. I support public safety one-hundred-one percent, but it's just, at this time, we just need to have, you know, something just a little bit more equitable, something that shows parity, but, because what we're trying to strive right now, we're just trying, just not only to meet the need, you know, we're in a deficit overall when it comes to public safety. But we need to strive and move in that forward direction to, when we can really, really get in full stride and be what we're supposed to be. But, right now, I just really want us to just, just to work together and, you know, just, just have some parity when, when it comes to these staffing numbers, because even if we get what we get, we're still on the backside. So, I, I, I just need to make that point, and Horatio shared some numbers with me, with just numbers in fact, with the, just pure numbers of, of your statistics. And, and, you know, it wasn't per capita, but at the same time, you know, we have to look, when we compare ourselves as Glendale to a bigger city, we just have to put that, you know, that capita, the per capita component in the back of our minds, because, you know, when you compare yourself to a big city, you're not as big as that city, but we still have the same, same problem, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Bowers.
Mayor, I have, I have a, a statement. The, I've gone through two budgets and I've heard the same from the police. They're always understaffed, but they did the best they could. They've been cooperating, but the thirty-one sworn police officers is not new. It has been consistent. Now, we decided to go a different way, that's not their fault, but they've always been consistent with the need for additional police. Maybe you're not aware, Councilmember Chavera, because you were not here. But it's, but it's a fact.
I, I, I just wanted to respond. Councilmember Alvarez, I'm, I'm very, I'm very, very aware, very, very astute to what's going on. I guess, let me clarify, my point is that we're asking, you know, to maintain our fire service, our police service at a level which is strained right now. What I'm asking for is just, the numbers that we're getting are strained numbers. What I'm asking for is just to have, just to parity, some equity, just to help each other in our departments with their ask. I wasn't asking, I wasn't putting one above the other, it's just that we have some hard decisions to make, but I want to make sure that we can do them in the right way.
Okay.
That's what I was, I, I'm very well aware of the need.
Okay. And, and I'm glad that you brought that up, but that's not what I heard. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavera, I'm sorry, Mr. Hugh.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Martinez on his comments and, and concerns, and I agree with him, talking about staff and the efforts that they do put in, and I know Councilmember Sherwood mentioned it himself. Again, the, Councilmember Kanak mentioned the sales tax keeping us out of bankruptcy. I think staff's trying to figure out a plan to keep us out of bankruptcy and, and build up our funds and the right ten percent and different reserves that we should have. It is, it is a difficult one. I know twice as citizens have voted for sales tax increases just for public safety to beef them up. I'm not sure all the comments when they went out to defeat four fifty-seven, how that was presented to the public from the council itself, but they did carry the, the hard work to, to ensure that the sales tax remained intact. It is difficult, and if we're going to try to bring the departments up where they should be, I guess the comment would be then, staff's going to have to go back and show us other savings and cuts in, in other departments in order to pull it off. And, and it appears that's what we're asking staff to do at this point, is come back with another recommendation where they're going to, where they're going to make the additional cuts.
All right. Rose George. Councilmember Sherwood.
I don't want to hear the word bankruptcy. I mean, that's, we're a long ways away from that, so I, I've not heard that before in any session, so let's be clear that, let's not even be discussing that kind of word. Just a simple question, Chief, on, in terms of overall crime statistics for, for the city, we're, we are down a certain percent, correct? When you look at the whole, you know, all calls?
Mayor, Councilmember Sherwood, yes. Overall, we are down. Property crime is up slightly, violent crime is down slightly, so.
Okay.
Essentially the same.
And, and, and your response times for your level two and threes obviously have gone up?
That's correct.
Many minutes. And then on your, on your priority one calls, they're, once again?
We're at, under five minutes, so.
But that's, that's been, that's grown a little bit over the past few years from about?
It's, it's a matter of seconds.
Okay. Okay. Just, I mean, just, I think that's, I think that little bit that was what Councilman Chavera was trying to get to was just, just overall crime statistics and, and that we're not, when you look at the overall number, we're not doing, we're not increasing that number, and, and for all the good things that you've done to, to keep us from that, so. That, that was, that's all I have at, at the moment, although I do have something that's unrelated to public safety, so.
Okay. Well, I, and I, I'm going to take the liberty for a minute. A week ago Sunday, and I may have already told this story, I think I told this story to you, I think, I was going to a meeting early Sunday morning, and I had noticed a very large dark area in the road in the intersection, just coming up to the intersection before the crosswalk. And it, and it puzzled me a little bit, so I turned around, went back and parked next to the road and walked out, and it was either diesel fuel or transmission, but it was a lot. And it also happened to be the last day of Bike Week, which is where almost anybody that owns a motorcycle that hasn't even got on it for a year decided to ride their bike that day, and there was a lot of motorcycles out. And my concern was, is somebody coming down the road at forty-five miles an hour and the light turned red and they jam on the brakes on a motorcycle, absolutely was going to go down, because you didn't know you were on top of this until you were on top of it. And I had called the non-emergency number for Glendale, reported to the dispatcher, told her who I was, where I was at, described the intersection, and thirty minutes later there still wasn't an officer. Now, this is Sunday morning, typically I would assume that you probably don't have a lot of staff on Sunday morning trying to move your people around where they need to be for, for, for more calls. I called back again and had told the dispatcher that it was something very concerning to me, I was going to stay there, because I pretty much figured that I would be making the nine-one-one call when the bike went down. I, I pretty much assumed that's what was going to happen. About ten minutes later, an officer did show up. He and turn went ahead and called a wrecker, and, you know, the point there is, is I think that the police are putting their people where they have to put them when they expect the highest volume of calls. And fortunately, nobody got into an accident, and so that was a good thing. So I just wanted to point that story out, that I do believe they're managing the very best they can with who they have for the times allowed. Something that's very concerning to me, and I, and I've noticed it a little bit this morning, a little bit with the council, but, but I'm seeing it more and more with the police and fires. I'm starting to see some angst between the two departments, and that's something that, you know, I've been very proud over the months that, you know, our fire and police seem like they get along very, very well, and, and please don't let this turn into they get it, we should get it type thing. And that's, that's what I've noticed a little bit this morning, even with the council, that, that's not what it's about. Public safety, period. What do we have to do as a council to make certain that public safety, our officers, our firemen, firefighters, are there when, when they need to be, when they need to be there? You know, we keep talking about in the past what council has done, you know, rose-colored glasses are great, but the fact is, there were some decisions made that weren't, weren't good decisions. Everybody understands it, we just have to move on. The single biggest factor that nobody wants to address is the fact that had the sales tax been one point two percent instead of seven tenths, we wouldn't be talking about this. This, this would have been a done deal. But the fact was, there wasn't the will of the council to put up with the taxpayers. Nobody wanted to take that, nobody wanted to take that on. And, and quite honestly, they would have hated you just as much if it was one point two as it was seven tenths. People that were mad, were mad. But that, that's what we needed to do. The fact is, is none of us here can bring back a half cent sales tax increase, because it wouldn't fly, and we all know that. So it comes down to the very last thing is, each one of us, and I asked the council to do this two weeks ago, we have to decide who we're going to cut to get what we need. Bottom line, we have to make the decision. I don't think going to the staff and keep asking them, make recommendations, we need to just, us, we need to decide, who do we need, who don't we need? What's the most important thing for the city, and who can we get by without? And I think that's where the council really needs to focus their attention. If we're going to do these, these increases, who are we going to cut? Because there is nothing else to do. That's my statement. Councilmember Martinez.
I have a question for Mr. Scherhammer. You know, it was mentioned about the fifty million, the forty-five million dollars, I guess, for the, the ticket from the enterprise fund for the taxi. So there's a payment plan in place for that. Is there, in fact, what, one point something, three or four, is being paid for this year, the current year that we're in?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, the, currently, the payment is about one point eight million dollars a year. So that's the repayment plan for both water sewer and sanitation landfill. It's based on a twenty-five-year term. So, that's what's in this year's budget.
So that's, that's being paid off, I mean, it's going to take some time, but it's being paid off. Over, I want to make the point that there was a, that hot water resources committee was put together, and they looked at a lot of things, including that, and there were some recommendations from that committee, that that should be paid back, and so if we do anything with that, there would be counter to what that committee recommended.
Mayor and Council, that's correct, and it would also be contrary to what we've written up in several official city documents. Not only annual budget books, but the annual, comprehensive annual financial report and bond offerings.
And as far as for economic development, I mean, every city needs to have economic development. And as long as we do things that bring in business, I think it's good for the city, we should continue to do that. Because if there's something that's being illegal, if you believe me, go to other institutes, it's going to be run on top of it, and we won't be able to do it. And I know there's been made references to the most recent one that we had, Cadillac over in, in Bel고, but that was based on an agreement that was, you know, worked out for the city with, on Cadillac, uh, over ten years ago. Six million, I don't know if I have the figures right, six million of that was to remove a lift station from there. I see Mr. Johnson nutting yes over there. So, and the four million, other four million was in incentives. And that, you know, over, that never happened, for whatever reason, but that was the same deal that was offered and it was taken by the, the new group that came in. And in the long run, that's going to be good, because it's going to bring not only that revenue there, but there's two more parcels there that hopefully, you know, for too long, and I think there is some interest already for other car dealers to come in. So we just can go down the curtain and say we're not going to do any more economic development. That has to continue, as long as it's legal and there's something that's going to be for the long-term benefit of the city. Lastly, I, I just want to read from the, the material that was presented to us for the council. Take me a minute. I said part of it, but I, I gotta read it. The ongoing structural operating deficit is shown in the chart above, referring to the chart we have in the materials of what is shown. It's not sustainable or fiscal. The addition of more general fund ongoing operating expenses will worsen the ongoing structural operating deficit and will require additional reductions beyond the fourteen point three million required by fiscal year two thousand fifteen to fiscal year two thousand eighteen in the PCD chart. The addition of more one-time expenses will further deplete the meager general fund reserve level expected at the end of fiscal year two thousand fourteen. Also, the rating agencies and bond investors were informed that the city would continue to make adjustments to eliminate an ongoing structural operating deficit. These discussions occurred in November, December, two thousand twelve in preparation for the December two thousand twelve bond refunding that resulted in the restructuring of two hundred fifty-seven million dollars of the city's existing unmissable property corporation and the PFC outstanding long-term debt. Further, the rating agencies and bond investors were informed the city would continue to build its general fund reserve, the foundation for a solid and sound financial position. Any reduction of the estimated general fund balance further reduces the general fund reserve level from an estimated eight million at the end of fiscal year two thousand fourteen. Such a step contradicts the message we provided to the Glendale community, rating agencies, and the investment community, and jeopardizes the city's ability to address unplanned but necessary expenses that may arise during the year. And then it goes on, overall, the bottom-line recommendation regarding the public safety and healthcare, additional items discussed above, is as follows, and it says we're not funding an additional five and a half million ongoing at this time, and then goes on from there. But I just wanted to, you know, repeat that, what, you know, what it means if we move any money, is take away, it also impacts finally the way we back the general fund balance. And heaven forbid if we, some big emergency comes up and, you know, a contingency, we need to bail out that reserve. There's no question about it, and we said we were going to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Bowers.
Mayor, members of the council, allow me to share a couple of thoughts. One is, we do have a very significant financial problem. And when I arrived here, it was on the twenty-seventh of March, and I saw the presentation, and we subsequently had discussions about forming a set of, of financial policies, which you showed support for, that would help to disperse and, and increase revenue. And we set out to try to present to you a very, very conservative and slow but steady path to, to a balanced and solvent fiscal position. I don't think that either Chief Burdick or Chief Black would declare me insensitive to their needs. I think we should be very, very proud of them. They do an extraordinary job. When I look in the balance of circumstances, I look at two very capable leaders in currently accredited organizations despite the challenges, and I understand that in fire, we're nudging the response time edge of that, of that accreditation. There is no money to find. It only can be taken by severing something else. There is no option. We can kick the can down the road, but we will meet it in the future. We came, when I presented on the sixteenth, starting with, I believe we have a solution with no layoffs. That was very important to try to keep, you know, the, the layoff pool is a very small pool. We have public safety, police, fire, we have the enterprise funds, and then we have the rest, which is actually a small piece of the pie from which everything must come. So, what we do today is terribly important. One, because it has an ongoing predictable annual need to continue to supply the funds that you need to approve these, these requests, reasonable and honest requests. If we take that out of any of the money like the payments for, back to the, to the funds that are structured, you have to do it again next year. You have to do it again next year. So there's only one answer to how you fund this, and that's to cut out something that also has an ongoing expense to us. That's surgical and severe. So, because I believe strongly in my role and responsibility to be fundamentally fiduciary, I, I stand on, on my belief that what we presented to you is a, is a sound and responsible approach. If you, if you select these, the changes, and that's fine, it's, we will, we will with full support, find- approach. If you, if you select these, the changes, and that's fine, it's, we will, we will, with full support, find the mechanisms to do that, but it will be surgical. I don't see how that can be avoided. So, thank you.
Moving on to our next item, City Manager Report.
None, Your Honor.
None, okay.
Are you gonna ask for direction for?
Yes.
You need to ask for direction on these items.
Okay, well, I guess consensus of moving forward with, with what was presented this morning or not, I guess is really the direction we're looking for.
And, Your Honor, we need that in order to, to move the budget forward. We need that direction today.
Okay.
Before we do that, Mayor, the question. If the council were to say, yes, go ahead and make changes, will that require layoffs?
Yes.
Will it require layoffs?
Yes.
Okay. And not, and not from the, not from public safety, it will have to come from someone else?
Yes.
From the general fund?
Yes.
Absolutely.
I, I for my support, what's been presented.
Well, I am in consensus, Mayor, that, I know we're in tough times, but we do have to fund our public safety, and I am in consensus that, you know, we find a solution, and one of, we just, what Councilmember Martinez just asked, you know, if there's gonna be any layoffs, but I know those 20, forgive me for the number, was it 27.5 FTEs that are currently funded right now?
There are just under 23.
23. Well, I, I ask that everything take, be taken into consideration. I do wanna move forward, but I only wanna move forward with considering what we heard today, and find, you know, find, find the parity, parity that we need to move forward with public safety concerns.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
It's important that we have specific direction, and not leave it to us to determine what parity is. So if you could, if, if you could collectively, as a council, give us the specifics, that would be important for us to have. Thank you.
Clarify that, as far as where the cuts would come from?
No, no, Mayor, members of the council, if you're saying specifically to fund the request as written, that's fine, that will be clear. But if, if you want us to make a judgment call on, on the question of parity, then I would be more concerned that that's not the role we should play.
I agree.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is there any, I know that we're not supposed to use the enterprise fund, but we've used it before. Is it possible to, to use a enterprise fund to pay for, for increasing the personnel in, in fire and police?
This is a question directed to the City Manager?
Yes.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Alvarez, that would, that would be a one-time, there's no mechanism to support that in future years, and that's not a good fiscal policy to draw down that kind of reserve, because it creates immediately a debt on the other side, and the general fund must pay that debt back today, not today necessarily, but it must have a sensible and viable mechanism to pay that debt back.
Please, Mayor.
Actually, we made a decision not to do that, any, we, we made a decision, I believe, not to borrow from the enterprise funds again for the previous council.
And it's, it's another.
Yeah, we, we made that decision not to do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Well, and I, and I'd like, again, anything the previous council done can always be changed by this council. Our hands are not tied in that case, although I think that was a good decision. So I just wanna make sure that, that everybody understands that, that the council has got the opportunity to do things. I think that that was more prudent by, by not borrowing from that. I think it makes a lot of sense. So, let's, let's go back to the original question, as stated this morning, is that your direction?
With one, one exception, I, you know, we talked about parity, the City Manager needed direction on that parity. I, I would suggest it with, maintain, of course, the 8, the sworn ask for, for fire, and then just reduce slightly the 31 to 20 for the sworn of police.
And I, obviously, how do you get 20?
Well, the, the reason why, I, the, what I come up with 20 is when I was looking at the numbers, especially with, and certainly, certainly, don't get me wrong, this is still, we're still, we're still behind, but when I saw the, the numbers, the 2565 of, you know, the, the crime component, we do have a reduction in crime, but the still, we still have the, the responsibilities to, to staff, you know, police and fire, and to me, that was the only solution that I can come up with parity. And, you know, because, you know, you're, you're looking, when, when fire goes out, they go out in crews, and we're only asking for 8 to staff at, at a specific peak time. When you're asking police, of course, they're gonna be there, they're in a 40-hour work, 8 hours, that was the only solution that I could come up with, and that's the solution that I had.
Clarification, Mayor. Clarification, Councilmember, are you saying 20, 20 positions for fire?
No, 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 sir. No, no, reduction from 31 to 20 for the ask of, of, of police, and 8 for the sworn for the peak time of, for fire.
From 31 to 20?
Yes, sir.
So you, they, they would be adding 20 positions?
Well, that's, that's what the ask was made today, and it was a little different from what the ask was made a couple of weeks ago.
That's what I'm trying to get at, so we're asking, we would be asking for 20 additional fires?
No, no, police, police.
Leaving the, leaving the fire alone?
Yeah, police.
Okay, I'm just gonna get through me that 20.
No, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
Mayor, I guess I wish we could do everything just like Councilmen are talking about right next to me. What I don't have is a recommendation, who I would lay off to make it happen. I think that's what City Management's waiting for. I don't have, I don't have that on my fingertips right now.
Mayor.
You mentioned that, what, who else? It should be up to the council to start going down the list of employees and what, which ones we can lay off.
Mayor, Mayor, I, I think that's a role that we have to play. If you had, saw a department that you didn't wanna fund, it would be one thing. But when you talk about the individuals, I think that's something that has to be done by administration, I think.
Right, I agree. So your direction is?
I don't have a department to say I don't wanna fund, that's my point, right now.
Okay, so your direction is not, not to accept what the police and fire are looking for, and accept the City Manager's recommendation?
It is at this point.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm just trying to clarify.
You're correct.
Okay. Councilmember Martinez?
Accept the manager's recommendation.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Something along the lines of what Council, Councilman, Councilperson, Shaver is saying. Some lesser number for police, I don't know what that number is. 20, I guess, is a good starting spot. I'm still not, I'm still not on board with the fact that we can't find other funds, other than general fund, to support this. I think we also have to take into consideration that if you're talking 20 other, if we're using the number 20 for police, that number's not gonna happen July 1st, it's not even gonna be available January 1st. It's, 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 I don't see that being a big effect on this coming, on this coming fiscal year, to the tune of whatever that 20 would represent. I'm still, I, I've read the reports from Dick, I haven't had any lengthy conversations with him on how these effects are bonding in terms of not going forward with the numbers that we presented before, in terms of paying back enterprise funds, but I think there's some, I think there's some wiggle room there, and I think there's still, not to throw a wrench into it, but this whole arena issue hasn't been addressed, and, and I know we just got some numbers today from Ms. Sherhammer in terms of going back to fiscal, fiscal year four, 2004, about what our expenditures and expenses are, and, and if you take away the debt, I'm sorry, I won't even get into detail there. So I'm, I'm of the adage that we need to still work the public safety part of it. And the direction would be, I guess I can go with what Councilman Shaver stated to start with.
Councilmember Alvarez.
You know, I, I've advocated for the employees, you know, I, I don't like layoffs. There are some departments that are more important than others. I, I think that we should really look as to what is important to keep the services for our taxpayers. But I don't recommend usually the, the employees that do the most, and they get paid less, are the ones that are getting always the act, so I, I can't agree to that, but I know that we can work something out. There is some departments that we could put on hold and not spend as much as we're, we're spending on them. I, I agree with Mr. Bowers on, we don't have any money, and, but I don't wanna employees to be laid off, that shouldn't, that do a lot of work, and I don't wanna see that happen. So I think we should look at it, let staff look once more, and, because public safety is very important.
Okay, I'm, I'm not clear, do you?
I want staff to look and see where, put things in priority as far as departments, without causing the layoffs.
Okay, well, I, I think the question is, is do you support the fire and police recommendations with, I guess, a sort of an amendment from Councilmember Shaver, or the direction of, because you're kind of in the middle, what you're saying.
Yeah, I support public safety. I think we should look at our budget again and come up with, we need to support public safety. We need the additional police, we need the additional firemen.
Okay, so you're leaning more towards?
Chorita.
Okay, very good. Okay, Councilmember Alvarez?
No, Vice Mayor connect.
I'm looking at her, yeah, yeah. Vice Mayor.
This is a really, really tough decision. It really is, because I'm physically conservative, and I agree with Mr. Bowers on this budget, I really do, but I also, so much of this has been support of public safety, and to let them down now, and let the public down, because that's what the public expects, so I'm very, very, very torn on this decision. I will go along with the public safety. I do think PD can be cut down, because I don't, that wasn't what was presented in the first place, I think that can be, I'll go along with Councilmember Shaver on that. As far as the medical, I, as far as direction on that, I think we need to leave that alone and go ahead and have it studied, I think. What I mean is, they, let the increases stay, we'll work on it and get those costs back down, hopefully for the employees and the employees, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, so you're, you're along with Councilmember Shaver? Okay.
And I'll clarify, I'll just clarify, I didn't clarify on the medical, and I think Councilman Shaver and you need to do the same.
Absolutely.
I'm with, on the medical, I think, I think that can be worked, so go with the recommendation of, of the increase as it is, but I think that can be worked and with, with BCBS.
Okay, well, I, I mean, obviously, we have direction. I, I can't support, well, I'm gonna get myself into trouble here, I totally support public safety, but without knowing where the funding's gonna come from is my biggest, absolute biggest concern. There are departments that are gonna get whacked, and, and it should be no surprise to anybody, and again, I, I had asked the council at the last meeting, please come prepared to tell me what department you're willing to cut, because that's, we have no other choices. And so with the direction the council's taking today, which is to support public safety, which all of us want to do, that's fine, but unless we know where the money's coming from, I, I don't know how you can, I don't know how you can do that and explain to your citizens, well, we're supporting public safety, but we're whacking that again. Yes, sir. Okay, so with that, not because I don't support public safety, but because I don't have enough information to say where the money's coming from, and who's gonna get hurt, and how that's gonna affect us on the other side, I, I can't support the proposal that the police and fire have given today.
Thank you, Mayor. What I would add to that is that the, you know, there's gonna be layoffs, and we don't know where those are coming from at this point, if that's been identified, I think. Then, that needs to happen, I think, because, say, if, I don't know what this criteria would use to, is let go, because, for example, the libraries, it's gonna impact, if there's gonna be a large enough impact that it affects libraries, that means, and the public is gonna know that probably libraries are gonna have to further reduce their, their hours, or who knows, even maybe cut one down, I don't know, because I don't know what the, what's this gonna do. So I, I think that there's, needs to be more thought given to this, it's just exactly what, what areas I'll be talking about. Eliminate positions is fine, but we haven't identified where the, where those are coming from. I don't know if staff can go ahead and do this, prepare the budget without identifying, who's gonna be affected by this.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Martinez, the way that is done is, is to understand what the, what the cost is, and then to evaluate, first, if there's vacancies, of course, you can take the advantage of those, but then to determine which service areas, and nobody can afford to lose, but which, which service areas must we then draw from? And, and by and large, that's a difficult job, but one that obviously is, there's some experience in that process, so it's a difficult, but, but logical process.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, as far as cost, if you're talking about 30 positions, public safety related, you can use a rough average of 100,000 positions, so you're at 3 million ongoing right there. That doesn't include all the additional stuff that comes with it, which are the additional costs that are related to vehicle fuel, vehicle repair, overtime, specialty pays, special life equipment, such as the turnout gear, or the vests, or anything like that. So you're easily looking at 3 and 1/2 to 4, probably.
And I think that, you, you know that the pool is very small, because with public safety and enterprise funds out of it, you end up with a very small pool, from which that has to be, and then that's an ongoing expense, which will increase next year, and perhaps you'll face this again.
And, and what I suspect is gonna have to happen is not go back to every department and take a percentage from every department, because there's, there's nothing left to give. I think we're gonna be looking at one department that absolutely doesn't have to be there and whack in one entire department. I, I don't know, I don't know how, how else you can possibly do that, but if that's the will of the council, that's the direction we'll go.
Mayor?
Yes?
I think that we can cut the consultant fees that we were paying. Some of them are not doing us any good to be paying lawyers and consultants. I don't want lawyers to, our staff to lose their jobs, but I, I think that we could easily cut lawyers, and that would be, that would be something. cut lawyers and that would be, that would be something that we should, we could do.
And Councilmember Alvarez, I understand it, but frequently the attorneys are saving us money by not being sued in certain ways too. It's kind of like having a disease and not taking your medicine.
I disagree.
In some occasions.
Mayor, we currently have $500,000 budgeted for outside legal fees. That's the sum total of it. And if you're interested in knowing by department what the general fund dollars are, if you go to page six in your workbooks, it's listed right there.
It's going to be more than one department.
Pardon me?
It's going to be more than one department.
Yes.
Yep. Yeah.
Ms. Sherhammer, in HR and risk management, we've got 19 FTEs. How much was that previously? Do you know how many FTEs that had previously in that?
It was over 30. I can look it up in here, but it was over 30, yes.
Well, and I was just curious, because I know that our, the, you know, the employees have gone down about 25 percent, which is related to HR, and so I'm just seeing the correlation between the percentages.
Don't let me come over and do the amicable.
So Mayor and members of the council, what, if you, if you collectively identify something that you don't want to fund, please let us know, or we will bring back a budget for you that's balanced, that continues on the, on the conservative role, but with, with of course, very substantial impact on the current organization.
Yeah. You know, I'm trying to look at this and what is absolutely most critical to our citizens. And there's just things that you just can't touch. You just, there's nothing you can do. And the ones that you look like easy targets, obviously, I mean, the only one that I'm seeing here, and I'm probably going to take a beating over this, but would probably be communications unless there's something in there I don't understand. And that's, that's still, that's, that's only 60 percent of the total, total amount of money that we'd need if you, if you took the entire department out. Am I, am I missing something somewhere?
No, sir. Mayor, I heard Ms. Sherhammer, you said four to four and a half million for 20 positions when you add in all the ancillary, ancillary cost. I guess I've always, always used, used 100,000 number for, for public safety in terms of salary and benefits. I don't understand the rest of that, the rest of that number.
Bulletproof vests and turnout gear and all the things they have to buy that they don't currently have per person.
Right, I'm saying 30 position gets you 3 million, let's say, in personnel costs, but then you have to build in things like overtime. Overtime is not part of the regular salary number.
Correct.
So you have to build in overtime, you have to build in vehicle fuel. I mean, they use a lot when they're driving their cars all the time. You have to build in all the insurance requirements that go with it. Police and fire have high claims rates when it comes to vehicles, and it's not because they're poor drivers, it's because they're on the road 24 hours a day and they're often in big vehicles.
But in terms of the equipment, if we were staffed at larger numbers than the past, wouldn't some of that equipment still be in, had?
Much of the vehicles, well, for example, the vehicles in, say, police, they're, they're not recycled, replaced about every two years. So you have to build in some significant ongoing replacement costs associated with that. And all the equipment that goes with police vehicles is quite expensive. I'm not saying it's, it's just, it is what it is for all the equipment that you have to put into it. There are the specialty issues like police vests, turnout gears, et cetera. In addition, there are, there's the simple fact that when you have more people, they take up space and they have other requirements. And, I mean, both, both the police chiefs could probably explain to you in more detail the other stuff that comes with it, but it's not just paying salaries.
Fire and police chief. He said both police chiefs.
Oh, did I? Oh, sorry.
I knew what you were saying.
Thank you.
So we should use more like 160 million, or I'm sorry, 160,000 per person, because that's what that comes out to be, so.
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what the total is. I'm guessing at about 4 million. It could be maybe 3.7, but I think it, it gives you a size, a sense of the magnitude of what we're talking about.
And I'm not trying to diffuse that, I just, that was just a surprising number, so thank you.
Chief Black, could you, could you add anything to what she just said?
Mayor, I'd be happy to have, you repeated it, so can Mr. Bolton?
The question was ancillary, as far as the additional equipment you would need for those officers.
Right, we would, we would obviously scale that based on whatever revised number we, we, we come to.
For instance, the 20, I mean, is that where we were using 100K per person, what's a realistic number?
Mayor, I have a quick remark, I think they can move this along, if you don't mind.
Good.
Okay, the remark is that I know that we just purchased not too long ago vest for our, our police officers, and not only that, we just received a grant for, for vehicles also. And then in reference to the turnout gear, we're talking firefighters and then I know, and maybe after the fire, the police chief, chief party, because I know that in stock, we're talking for eight firefighters, I know that, I think we could probably reference in stock to what the equipment we already have on hand. We're not talking a great amount, but I know that we, we did make the purchase to keep up with, you know, our vest that, that do expire, and then we just received the, the new vehicle. So I just wanted to just put that to the, on the table.
Mayor, Council, Councilmember Shaver, the vests were for SWAT team, they were not vests for patrol officers, these would be additional need. Secondly, we have not been awarded any grant funds. We applied. That has not been awarded.
I was under the impression that they was.
We have not been, that decision has not been made, to my knowledge. And I think Mr. Bolton has a good figure for the one-time equipment costs.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, just as an estimate, basically, if you fund 20 of police's 37 positions, it's about 54 percent. So if I take 54 percent of their ongoing requests, it brings that down to just over $2 million. And on the one-time side, when they requested 1.4 million, 54 percent of that is $756,000. So in total, if we take that 54 percent of police's request and all of fires' request, then you're looking at 3.7 million ongoing and 1 million one-time, so your total that you're looking for is 4.7 million.
You're not making this better.
No, I'm sorry.
You know, you know what, Mayor? I'm going to change my mind.
We can't, we just can't do it right now. Can't do it, I'm sorry. I, I don't know what we're going to do, but we can't do this. I just, I, I really think, and I've said it for years, that we need to get back to basics in this, in this city and support the mandated services that we're supposed to do, get rid of all the ancillary extraneous things that don't have to be here, which there still are some here. But, you know, I, I said about, I'm the one that brought up the word bankrupt, because I'll tell you what, without the tax, we would have been bankrupt. And, but I don't think it's helped, and I can say right now publicly that we will have to, have to have, keep this tax, or we will have to go to the public for an enhanced public safety sales tax. That's all there is to it. So citizens out there, this is what's coming, because you look at the forecast, we're, we're not going to be any better off in five years than we are now. So something needs to be done, and go ahead, Ms. Sherhammer.
I was just going to say, I brought back up the five-year forecast. And what it shows is going into FY15, we will still have to do about four and a, almost $5 million worth of cuts.
Right. And I guess probably one thing that I've been always argued about too is that $6 million arena management fee. I think it's going to be higher and, you know, I'm hoping not, I'm hoping the revenue, whatever goes in there, the revenue generated will help bring that cost down to about 6 million, but there's no guarantee there. So I, I'm changing my mind. I, we just can't, we, we aren't going to be able to, as you say, we're not going to be able to sustain it. But I also request that, that everything, and I know you have, but I mean, I still know there are places that can be cut in this city, and even though we're pretty lean, but we need to decide what our job is as a municipality, you know? I, I really do. I mean, we need to get back to basics, and unfortunately, the decisions weren't made four or five years ago when they should have been made to make the cuts, because we thought that the economy was going to come back faster. And it just hasn't, and I'm, I can't leave the city, you know, in good conscience in a predicament it's going to be in in five years. And especially if we can't get the citizens of this city to, to extend the tax or do an enhanced public safety sales tax, we're, we're just going to be in trouble. And we've got, unless we can sell some assets, I, you know, I just, I really, we're in bad, we're just, this isn't good, just isn't good. And I, I want to support public safety more than anything in the whole world, but if it's, it's going to cost us, you know, and I'm, I'm just hoping we can come up with something that, we don't see fire stations closed. I mean, if that's where we're headed, we're, that's not going to be good either. So we need to, we need to figure this out, but right now, I can't, I just, I have to change my mind.
Mayor?
Actually, Councilmember Sherwood.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. You know, Vice Mayor, I just wanted us just, I, for some reason, I really feel that if we look at the vacancies long and hard, I just, I want to exhaust that to the very end of the vacancies. And I, you know, the rate of attrition, I just, well, I'm just a feeling.
Well, we can still do that. I mean, that's still, you know.
And I would love to still have your recommendation back on that, and just so we can just really look long and hard at those vacancies. I'm going to exhaust it.
Well, a budget is a projection.
Absolutely.
And depending on what happens, things, it can be changed. So, I mean, we can always come back, can always come back to us and, but I just, I just can't, my, I'm telling you, my heart and my brain and everything right now says I just, I can't put the city in the position that we're, we're, you know, going in that direction. I just can't. So I'm sorry, but I have the right to change my mind and I did, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Alvarez?
You just mentioned assets. We have one, we have property, the Camelback Ranch, that gives us nothing. Couldn't we sell that?
We'd love to.
Councilmember Alvarez? I would like to answer that question. I, not only selling it, I, I actually talked with the Mayor of Phoenix and said, you know, I would be happy to give you Camelback Ranch, just take it over. Don't even give me a penny for it, just take it over, but take over our debt. And he said, why would I do that? It's, it's worth a lot of money, only if there's a potential of making money off it. And with the contracts that were done in the past, we're not going to make money. And until business is developed around it, where we get tax revenues from it, that's going to be our biggest hammer that all of us have to really, really have to be concerned about. Not only what we're talking about this morning, but that in itself is going to be huge, huge. You know, the one thing that I want everybody to understand is there's a lot of doom and gloom, there's a lot of great things happening, but with, with what Mr. Bowers has presented to us, at least the fire and the police are not being cut. I understand they're not getting what they want. I get that, they're not getting what they want, but they're not being cut anymore. And no other services are being cut. So as, as bad as this budget is, I think it's the best that we're going to get until we figure out a way to come up with more money. And so if the direction is, is to take the recommendation, so be it. Okay?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, now we can go on to our.
I'm sorry, I just do want to qualify this, that the direction you gave is to hold it, I will be forced to reduce services.
We understand that, sir.
I want to make sure that's on the record.
We, we understand that, but that doesn't mean that we can't come back, if we can identify some cuts somewhere that we can agree on, that we can't come back even afterwards and, and supplement. I mean, we can certainly do that.
And I understand the bodies, that's perfectly outside the structural, that's what, that's going to force me into a different situation. So this was kind of all put into one.
There's not one of us in here that wants to be in the position we're in right now.
Thank you, I just wanted, thank you.
Right. With that, the next item on the agenda that the council is of special interest, each council member have the opportunity to indicate topics they'd like to have discussed by the council at future workshop, and I'll start with Mr. Sherwood.
Would like to get on the agenda for some time, not top priority, but the whole airport situation, not only with the hangar situation, but with the economic, the lack of economic development and just that whole, that whole piece of property that we own, I think we need to, whether, whether it be a workshop session or a roundtable discussion with staff and select, and council, but I just, I think that's a subject that we need to start putting on the table.
And Mr. Sherwood, to that point, I probably separately need to meet with the council members and make a report to each one of you on my trip from DC, because it was a, a topic of discussion and some of it sounded very good, some of it didn't sound very good, but I do need to meet with each, each and every one of you and give you a report of what I learned. So I'd like to do that sooner than later. Okay, Councilmember Alvarez?
No, nothing.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Hugh?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Shaver?
I would like to reiterate, Councilmember Sherwood, and that we address the airport at a, at a proper time.
Okay, very good. And Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
Okay, and I've got nothing. Seeing that was the last item on our agenda, I'd like to thank everyone for attending. That does conclude our workshop session. Council workshop is adjourned. We will have an executive session that will commence in this room in, say, 15 minutes. Let's make it a quarter till 12.